Wow, that's nice.
We need different lighting. You have to do a little bit of thing.
Just meeting our, missing our fearless leader.
He, he's been admitted, so. Just need to see his face.
Maybe he doesn't want to show up.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Hello.
Evening, Nathan.
All right. Have a quorum here, so I'll call this, uh, meeting on the Suitsbury playing board to order. Note that the meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment this evening? I'm not hearing anything. That being the case. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to set a public hearing for special permanent application for seventy-two Baker Road Serious Incorporated Wind Turbine. I see Linda is here. Good evening, Linda. Thank you for coming. To me, I wonder if the easiest thing to do here would be to schedule public hearing for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which, uh, does fall within forty-five day window. Uh, if that's, uh. Linda, do we have audio with you? Okay, um, are you able to?
Can you hear us?
I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes. Can everyone else hear me okay or no?
What were you saying?
Okay. So. Bring this down. So we would, we will be talking about having a, a public hearing on February tenth.
Okay.
Does that, uh, does that, uh, work?
Uh.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we'll do. Now we just need to decide what time, uh. Probably early in the meeting, um.
Preferably, yes.
Right, so, uh. We could just set the time. Should we go right into it at seven o'clock or maybe seven oh five, seven ten, anyone, uh? Seven oh five?
Yep.
Yeah. Give a little moment for a public comment and then just jump right in. Okay. Um. Do I hear a motion to set the wheels in motion to, um, do they have a motion to have a public hearing for the serious special permit application and all its details, um, February tenth at seven oh five PM?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm pretty sure I have to abstain from this vote, even for the special permit, uh, hearing. Being in a butter.
Well, you know what? That's, uh. That may be true, and that may be also true for Robert. So I'd like to ask somebody else to second the motion.
Oh, I thought I already had Nathan.
Okay, I, uh, I thought I saw Robert and maybe you guys both did at the same time and I only saw one of you. So all right, we'll say that Michael moved and Deacon seconded. And. All right, so now I'll call the role of the, uh, board members who are here and are not, uh, going to be accusing themselves from this matter. Uh, Decker.
Aye.
Bressler.
Uh, I won't be able to attend. I'll be on vacation, but aye.
That, that's fine. You can still vote on this. And, uh, Bonner.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm an aye. And the motion passes. Um, so that's it. The, uh, special or the, uh, the hearing for the special permit is set. And that's, that's all we need, um, tonight. So, uh, thank you both for, uh, just kind of coming to, uh, confirm that and uh, we'll, uh, look forward to hearing from you again, um, on the, uh, at the, at the public hearing. A- a- as I'm sure you know, I mean, it's. You know, we, we kind of went through the application previously, uh, when you came into our December meeting, but, uh, when, once we have the public hearing, it's, uh. You know, it's the big time. You know, that, that'll be, you know, your presentation to the board, um, to provide justification for a grant of the, uh, special permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening and.
You too.
See you next month.
Hmm, goodbye.
This time we have a few minutes before public hearing we have scheduled tonight. Well, I would like to quickly note, you know, I know we've got some minutes we're looking at later. And I want to just know, uh, Mateo. You know, I was, uh, kind of looking at the minutes recently and I noticed that some of the roll call votes, um, you are not recording the, uh, the actual responses from each, uh, member. And so with with a, with a remote meeting or generally with any vote that's taken by roll call, uh, the response of, uh, each member needs to be, uh, recorded, I believe. Just an aside on that.
Nathan.
Yes.
Mateo and I exchanged, I, I had the same comments in some of the minutes. I don't know why he didn't chime in. He said that things change with that. I was suggesting that this is a, a practice for us. It's, it makes it better record keeping to know where people stand, even if it's not required, since we've been doing it for the last few years anyway.
Yeah. Okay. That's, uh, it's good to know that that's, uh, like that. So we have to do roll call votes, but it's, uh, as far as the mans go, it's technically not a requirement to, uh, record each, uh, vote.
I didn't know that it changed. Mateo said that he checked with Grace, but, um, I mean, he could probably speak for himself. I, I never noticed that it got changed. Um. Mateo, I'm assuming you're there.
Hey, I am here. Um, I didn't want to say anything unless I was asked. Yeah, so great. I did check with Grace about it after Michael and I had uh, had an email exchange back and forth with this question. And she said that open meeting law does not require, uh, individual votes to be indicated and in the, in the event of a unanimous vote.
Um.
The, it still needs to be taken by roll call. Um, we can't do like raise a hand or does anybody disagree kind of things. Um, but the minutes don't need to reflect it unless there are distinguishing votes, like certain people saying yay, certain people saying nay, certain people abstaining. So if there are abstentions, for example, those are noted in the minutes by whoever abstains. I am happy to keep doing it the other way. If that's, uh, again, as Michael said, if it's sort of, um, custom for the board, if, and what people are used to, it's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would agree with that. It's, uh, you know, at the very least, it, it kind of makes it easier if you're looking through, you know, three or four pages of minutes that, uh, you don't have to go like, who was at this meeting again? And, you know, um, so on and so forth, so. Um. So.
Anything can ask the minutes question since we got five minutes to go.
Absolutely.
So maybe Mateo can just sort of prep us on which ones we're considering because it's, it's oh so confusing since there are a whole bunch listed there. So I'm assuming EX is executive session, but maybe just review for the whole group. Which ones were being asked to approve?
Well, before you go in there, Mateo, I just want to note that I put these on the agenda like that and I had gone through and, and at least from the, uh, my town government website and you know, because it will show you all the meetings that have been posted that don't have minutes attached. And the ones I have listed in here with the EX in there indicates that the board went into executive session. However, there is a portion of the meeting that's an open session. You know, in addition to convening an open session to go into executive session. Um. So the, I that's, uh, that's what that is. And of course, there's at least one there with the select board. Um. Yeah, we do have a big backlog of minutes. Um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this and then we'll be current and it'll be smooth sailing for as long as Mateo is with us. Um. Now.
Nathan, I just, I have a follow-up question to that since we got a minute, but I don't know if you know, maybe Mateo can check, but my sense is that the, if the board convenes and then automatically and then immediately goes into executive session, that's all we're doing. I don't think there's separate minutes for like the opening it up. It's just sort of executive session minutes because there's no business that's done except to open the meeting and go into executive session. We should, we should confirm that.
Mateo? Or was someone saying something?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it certainly makes things a lot easier if that's the case. Um, we don't have to have separate, separate sort of few sentence, uh, called to order, went into executive session. Um, I can find out if that, if that's the case or not.
Yeah. Hmm. It'd be easy to review anyway. Um, but yeah, I mean, you know, fair question. I, I don't know. Well. Let's see. So we're looking at the hearing and hopefully, uh, some deliberation. Now we got a lot of dead air time here, I guess, uh. Probably should have tried to squeeze in something else, but sorry, we got the.
Are, are we ready to talk about the twelve nine minutes?
Well, at this point it's seven fourteen and, uh.
Okay, yeah, fair enough, fair enough.
So. It's all right, you know, it is what it is. I'm just hoping that is, uh, we're gonna see someone show up here. Um, Mateo, we had, uh, I mean, yeah, I mean, we set this with Peter at the last meeting. Um. And seven fifteen. I'm going to, uh, open the public hearing. On the special permit application by Peter Gies for twenty-nine Highland Drive pursuant to section eight point six dash two dot A dot two of the town of Suitsbury zoning bylaw. For deviations to the standard setbacks from property lines for a travel portion of a driveway. At this time, we have no member of the public or the who is N E M T R?
That's gonna be Peter Gies.
Okay, so we do have the, the petitioner before us.
Okay, I just got an protest. I was stuck in traffic.
No worries. Um, it's we just opened the hearing. And now we are, uh, we are ready to hear your formal presentation to the board, uh, for this application, Peter.
Okay, well, for the members that came out to see what the, uh, project involved, essentially I am, uh, requesting the board make an approval. I don't know if it's, uh, I think Jeff said it would be a special permit. I thought it was more of a variance, but essentially, uh, I'm looking to, uh, take care of this, uh, side lot setback from my proposal for this utility road and driveway and bridge. Uh, traveling from Highland Drive over the existing utility road that goes to the pole number two. And, uh, from there, there'll be a spur road heading west down towards the wetland within thirty feet of the delineated wetland. And then it will also, uh, turn right or heading, uh, east to the bridge that will cross over and span the delineated wetland and join the existing driveway uh, servicing M seventy-eight. So given the fact that the, uh, the poles straddle, uh, the property lines, the, uh, the utility lines kind of go over the property line from the, uh, you can see on the map, uh, closest to Wendell Road, you can see the pole is just about on the property line of M seventy-eight and then heading east, it actually goes on to M seventy-nine. And then when it continues, it goes back onto M seventy-eight. And, uh, in the green delineated, uh, proposal lines there, that's the driveway we're looking to get approval on. And it's the, the problem is the bylaw that requires, uh, a minimum of fifteen foot setback from an existing property line. So given the fact that these utility lines are there to service those two existing two-family homes, um, I believe it's in both, uh, parties benefit moving forward. I'm not just thinking about myself, but I'm thinking in the future going down the road. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, when I'm no longer around or I sell the properties that there's never a question as to that side lot setback. That we have something recorded, uh, approved and recorded to ensure that in the future, nobody, neither owner would complain about that particular bylaw issue. And so I'm, I'm here today, uh, asking for your, uh, approval on this project. It's one of the first steps in the process and there's an order and the order was, you know, the delineation, talked to the conservation commission. They came out twice. They said, it looks good. Submit your notice of intent. Uh, but I felt like, and my attorney also felt like the order of business was to address this side lot setback for the road. So that's, uh, what I'm trying to do here.
Nathan, do you want comments or questions or do you want to?
Yes, has anyone else joined the, uh, call? Um, is there any member of the public on the call that wishes to ask questions or, uh, submit protest or any other evidence pertaining to this application? Okay. Does the board wish to, uh, ask any questions of the applicant?
I don't have a question, but I do have an opinion. If you're open to that.
Um, I'm set. If you got a question, Michael, go right ahead.
No, I don't have a question. I actually wanted to say, I mean, Tom and I went out on Friday and Peter showed a, you know, walked us around. It, it seemed very straightforward and a thoughtful approach, so I I, I support it. It seems like it, it just makes sense. Um, I can't imagine anything else that would be done and looking at the specifics, you know, as he pointed out, um, there, you can't build in the places off of Wendell Road going back because of the wetlands and the houses are set back, so, um, it really is the advantage of those houses back there are not, not in a position in any way to anybody as far as I could tell, so it, it seems like it's, it works well.
All right, uh, would anyone else like to ask any questions of the, uh, applicant? Peter, have you you done any evaluation of this, uh, request with respect to the review criteria that are spelled out in the zoning by law?
I'm not sure if, uh, I've got it all straight, but, uh, Mateo gave me this order of business for this particular uh, part of the process. Are you talking about the entire project, Nathan? As far as the, you know, from start to finish or just this portion of the project?
Just this portion of the project.
Uh, I thought I covered everything. I don't know if there's anything else that you needed me to do or submit. I'm thinking that I've, uh, I fulfilled all the obligations unless there's something that I have missed in this process.
Okay. All right, um. No one else has any, uh, questions at this time? Is, is everyone, uh, feel comfortable, uh, closing the hearing here? Okay. Uh, that applicant, you don't feel that there's any, uh, any further, uh, information that you feel, uh, you know, would you'd like to provide to the board and?
I guess the only other thing getting back to, uh, the reasoning behind all of this, uh, I think I mentioned it, uh, on both, uh, tours with the board members that came out to look at the project. Uh, the premise of this all revolves around trying to improve the reliability of the utility service. I've had problems over the years with trees falling on the electric service and tearing it down and the premise is that, uh, with by having a road as such, it will enable me to get service trucks in there to actually address any tree trimming that needs to be taken care of. Currently, the way it stands, uh, you have to get people who are willing to climb trees. Uh, the, the biggest issue comes around, uh, the winter time where it's most difficult when you have ice storms and the like and, uh, heavy snow where the branches have been falling on the power lines, uh, the premise of doing this project will enable me to much better stay on top of that. And using it as a regular driveway, the premise also is to make sure that it's plowed on a regular basis and trafficked. So whenever, uh, a situation comes up with a tree falling down, particularly in the winter, uh, it's always going to be plowed and fully accessible by the utility company or any tree trucks. So that's the, that's the whole idea behind this to, uh, basically ensure electrical reliability. Also in view of the fact that the state wants everybody to go get away from fossil fuels and go with all heat pumps. Um, the problem then becomes that it's the sole source of energy for heating the house. If you get rid of the wood like they want everybody to, if you get rid of the, uh, fuel oil or the propane, uh, being reliant just on that one utility makes it imperative that uh, we ensure serviceability of those power lines. And by doing this project, that will greatly assist any type of requirements down the road whenever we do have trees falling or hopefully prevent them, get to them before they actually take out the power lines, which I've got a lot of trees right now threatening the power lines as it is.
Thank you. That's, uh, that's good to know. You know, I, I might feel like I'm, I'm beating a dead horse, Peter, but, uh, you know, one, I, I recently, you know, got a copy of the, uh, land use planning handbook in my hands and I've been kind of going through it as a policy, uh, perspective, so I'm trying to be thorough and, um, part of it is that, uh, you know, some of this we've kind of been over before, maybe on site visits or on, um, you know, when you came to the board pre- previously and, you know, first kind of introduced this to us, but, uh, I think it's important that any of the information that may have already been shared is also included during this time of the hearing, um. I guess, uh, so, you know, Michael noted that on Friday, uh, he and Tom went down. Um, I would also note that, uh, Keith and myself were, uh, went down and, uh, view, uh, did a site visit as well, um, where we were able to see the area and, um, and walk on the parcel. Did we, uh, do we cover today? Is there any, uh, reason to suspect even though no one is here at the public hearing that any, uh, well, actually, Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, just a point of order. I'm really sorry to bring it up now because I didn't notice it until now, but was there a vote to open the public hearing? And I don't know if it.
I don't know that there needs to be.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was going over other. Right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, yeah, we initiated, we initiated the public hearing with public notice and, uh, things like that, uh, to a a date and.
Yeah, I just meant for tonight, like, uh, seven fifteen when we started. I witnessed it before. I didn't know if it was required.
Okay, no, no, that, I mean, you know, thank you for, uh, for that. No, it's, uh, so it's good to check. All right, so I was gonna ask if, uh, you know, even though there's, uh, you know, there, there does not seem to be any members of the public here to protest this, uh, Peter, would you suppose that there's any reason to believe that any of the butters or, um, persons of interest in this case might for any reason feel injured by this, uh, by this project? And if so, you know, why or why not? Why or why not?
Um, my belief would be no. Uh, given the fact that the closest abutter to the project is going to be the one listed there who is Tyler, Tyler Richards. His property is also affected by the wetlands that parallel Wendell Road. And that particular wetland makes a right-hand turn uh, before the cleared area where his home is located, the two family across from the athletic club. Uh, it's a nice chunk of land. But given the wetland bylaws, I don't think he would ever be allowed to do much of anything because, um, with the, with all the restrictions of cutting trees or disturbing soils in that area, I don't think he would be aggrieved because he would not be allowed to ever do anything there as far as construction or putting a dish into his home or a barn or anything like that. So, and the premise that uh, I'm maintaining a very substantial distance from the side lot, not even getting close to the fifteen foot minimum requirement going by his property. I don't see how he could possibly be aggrieved by this. Uh, and, uh, being that I own, you know, naturally M seventy nine, M seventy eight and M thirty nine, naturally, I'm not going to be aggrieved. Uh, I can't see down the road in the future somebody being aggrieved, although you just never know when people buy a house. I was thinking of like, what's the worst case scenario? Why would one of the two homeowners on M seventy eight and M seventy nine not want to have electric power coming in? Or the fiber optics or phone lines or whatever else might come about, but for right now, those are the three different utilities. Often thought, okay, let's say, let's say somebody covers their whole roof with, uh, solar panels, puts in batteries and wants to completely disconnect themselves from the grid. They might present an argument, well, who needs the poles? Who needs the wires? So why is that road so close to my property? Uh, I think that's a stretch, but it's always a possibility. And for that reason, I figured why don't, if we're gonna try and do this project, let's make sure that that doesn't become a fallback issue for that new owner who has no interest in being connected to the grid would want to say, oh, wait a minute, hold on here, this road is closer than fifteen feet to the property line. That based on Schutzbury bylaws is not permitted. So for the person that did want to stay connected to the grid, uh, with the other one saying, we want nothing to do with it. This kind of puts that issue to bed, so they can't down the road, turn around and say, well, I don't like this. It's part of the bylaw and you either need to move your road or get rid of it. So I'm thinking by, you know, trying to look forward on this, let's try and, let's try and put all the issues to bed as we're moving through this process. And that's why I, uh, when, when discussing all the possible hitches with my attorney, this one came up and, uh, he said, absolutely, you gotta get this one put to bed first, even before you get your notice of intent in. All right, so that's one of the first orders of business to ensure that. So that's kind of the whole.
Peter, you, you're talking about, um, like one of the houses going off the grid, but these, uh, this property already is, uh, already has a, a shared driveway in use. Is that true?
Yeah, the, oh yeah, absolutely. That is correct. Yeah. That is definitely correct. Every, you know, the properties, those two properties need, have and need easements going over M thirty nine. So there is already a, a, an agreement on that.
Right, yeah, and our easements, uh.
So for them to access their lot, they forcibly have to come down Highland Drive. I had considered it when I, when I had done the, when I did the other property, I considered, well, let's, let's put a road in, let's put a new driveway that services the two properties. But at that point, already the Cohen Act had gone through, which is the Watershed Protection Act, which made it very, very difficult to, uh, to traverse the wetlands. So at that time, it made all the sense in the world. Just go down Highland Drive and cut over to that property.
Right.
But now, you know, now things are changing again as far as all these, uh, utilities and, and what the state wants. Uh, so to me, all of a sudden, the reliability of that electric power grid is be going, is becoming more and more imperative to ensure that that's moving forward. I already put a heat pump system in on one of the properties. The other one is all propane and I think that's the next step on that one.
And I, I, I know you said this earlier, but you said that the neighbor Tyler, his house is, uh, there, there, any structure on the property is like obviously a good distance away. I don't know if we can see it on the plane even.
If you're looking at the map and you can see, uh, that looks like it's a yellow colored property line that comes, if you look at the northern property line of N, M seventy eight and you go west or towards Wendell Road, you'll see where it turns north at that corner.
Yeah.
And a, as you go northerly, the house is, I'm going to say probably about fifty feet in from that corner would be the southern side of that house. So it's fairly far over there. It doesn't show it on the map, but, um, it's all the way over toward the northern side of the property. And that was another one of those where prior to, to selling that property, I had opted to do a, uh, a major change. Uh, as a matter of fact, I do have some maps. I can pull it up. Let me see if I can get that. Like I, I think I pointed out to you in years earlier, uh, when, when I first divided the land, I don't know if this, if this is visible.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, this is the original parcel of land that I purchased. Okay, and you can see here, this stretch went all the way to Briggs Road, okay?
Okay, yeah.
All right, now, one of the things that I did when I bought the property is I subdivided it. And this particular map here, which if you wanted book and page, I can give you that. It's book fifty nine, page ninety on the registry of deeds, and I can give you the other ones too. If you want to write this down, the first map that I just showed you is book forty nine, page eleven. So if anybody wants to go, you can go to the registry of deeds right now and do a, uh, a search under plans and put in book forty nine, page eleven. That will show you the property as it appeared when I first purchased it. Okay?
Okay.
Then after that, book fifty nine, page ninety, I divided the property. And let's see if I can see this here. So, if you look at this here, what, this is Briggs Road, right where my pinky is, okay? And the, the last lot here is M seventy nine and M seventy eight. Now also you'll look at this, right? And you'll see that there are parallel lot lines from here, from Wendell Road going over to here. The other lot, the one where, uh, the neighbor is, is right here. Okay, that corner right there, pointing out to you. The house is, is more centered. If you just drew, drew a straight line down here, it's more centered in that little block of land.
Yeah, okay.
See the way that was? I made another change. I made another change to that property. Let's see which one this was.
I, I think, I think that covers the question as far as the, the distance, Peter. Um, I, I just, I, you know, um, but then the, the other, I was just gonna confirm, you know, like, you know, what I saw during the, the site visit was that, you know, the, uh, the area where the power lines go through the woods there, uh, you know, you can see that there's a kind of like an existing, um, wood road that comes off Highland Drive. And then the proposed area to turn into a driveway is, you know, the area directly under the, uh, power lines and obviously that area is, you know, I mean, there's some vegetation there, but it's, it, the, you know, the, the trees have already been removed there from the time when they, when the, uh, power lines went in uh, for the most part, right? So it's, I mean, you know, it's seems to represent, you know, less, um, removal of trees than alternatives.
Hmm.
Right?
I would say so, yeah. I mean, if you if you, if you, if you pick an entirely different location, then you're just cutting down way more trees and the premise is to have the road underneath the power lines. That's the basic idea. So, you know, to go further over, um, it doesn't make sense. I mean, if you went to the other side of the power line, then uh, you're just clearing out a much larger swath of trees. That's. of trees. That's, I, I'm not sure exactly where, what you're en, envisioning with this.
Well, no, no, I'm just simply stating that I noticed that when I went on the site visit that the, you know, that area is already, um, trees have already been removed and that, you know, any alternative plan would uh, result in removal of uh, more trees than this one would.
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, Peter, I understand, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, get information. At this point, I feel very satisfied. I think everyone else on the board does, so um. I think, I think we can wrap this up now, unless anyone else has thought of something else they want to ask. Okay, do I hear a motion to close the uh, hearing for the uh, special permit before us?
No move, close, it's, I moved to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Alright, discussion? Alright, I'll call the rule. Um, Raymond?
Aye.
Peckroft?
Aye.
Uh, Bonner?
Aye.
Ressler?
Aye.
Takeira?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The motion passes unanimously. Alright, well, uh, Peter, thank you very much for uh, your time tonight. Um, and next, I think the board will probably deliberate about this, and you're welcome to uh, to stay, though I would say that, you know, any further information we receive is considered ex parte communication and that uh, should not be considered in the uh, our, our decision, but I think we have all the information we need, right? So, um, would anyone like to uh, discuss this? Anyone have any, uh, now that we've gone through the hearing and received all the information, is there a? Would anyone like to start off the discussion?
I, I think we should. Okay. Wait.
Please, please, um.
No, I was gonna move to approve the special permit application and then have discussion after the motion, but if you want to discuss first before then, that's, sounds fine.
Yeah, no, that, that's a, that'll be fine.
Okay, I'll most approve the special permit application for twenty-eight dash thirty Highland Drive um, with Peter Gees.
A second.
Okay, let's uh, any discussion, right? Now, in, so on approval of the special permit, we need to kind of identify some, you know, elements that uh, you know, provide for the use and how the, the criteria is met. You know, what justifies allowing it and so on and so forth, and eventually uh, you know, incorporate all this into what will be a written decision. Um, I don't know if we need to do that all now, we can kind of approve the uh, the permit and then, you know, go on to, you know, kind of keep the decision as a, a subsequent step? You know, in terms of fleshing out all the uh, substance of the decision?
Nathan, would it be help me, helpful to just share the, the list of the new special permit criteria, so at least people see it, whether we discuss it or not?
Yeah, sure. Um, you have that handy? I, I did uh,
I do.
Okay, good.
I do have it handy. Give me half a second here.
And we don't have to uh, you know, do, do all this tonight. I, you know, I would like to at least kind of get started on it. I know we do have some other stuff in there to talk about. The cursor's being weird.
You guys see that okay? So this is just the highlighted version that we brought to town meeting, so that's why the red is there. But there's the general findings, which these top four. So the proposed uses in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw and particular rural citing principles. The proposed use to start significantly increase the risk to public health, law, fair safety and the residents of the town. The benefits of the proposed use that way, its adverse effects with respect to the town, which may include, but is not limited to financial, legal and environmental concerns. And their proposed use is consistent with the Schutzbury Master Plan, which we've recently discovered doesn't exist. Uh, and in particular, with the goal established for the natural resources and open space. actions, I guess. And then there's specific findings, which are much longer, which I will not read. Um, but sort of breaks it down more specifically. So I don't know if people have any questions about that. But those are the, the top four, I think of the. Okay, I can scroll the specific ones if you guys want me to scroll down.
So what we need to do is we need to establish findings that justify approval of the special permit. Now, you know, in the past, we, we, you know, we've used a template for special permit decisions, and you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we're uh, you know, prepared to, you know, completely draft that at this time tonight. Uh, you know, now that the hearing is closed, we have a ninety day period to reach final action, which includes uh, you know, finalizing a written decision that can be um, submitted to, filed with the town clerk, indicating the board's approval and findings and any condi, and conditions, if any, uh, for this uh, permit. Michael?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest what we did with uh, the Whitman special permit, which I think made sense was that we, you know, assuming we voted to, in that case, we voted to approve it, and then we voted to, um, I think have, it was, I, it was either you or Jeff, but one of you.
The first one was Jeff, the second one was me.
Yeah, so he drafted it, um, and then the subsequent meeting, he brought, you know, he chaired the draft, we discussed it, we made edits to that draft, and then, you know, we basically um, voted to approve, you know, the final draft, which represents the special permit. So I think, but the sequence for tonight is if we, we would vote to approve or not approve. Uh, if we vote to approve, then I think it's a matter of designating someone to do the draft, um, share it out before the next meeting, and then we can review it at the next meeting and see if we can finalize it then, or if it needs more revision.
Okay. Oh, let's do that then. I'll uh, any, any discussion then before, any further discussion before I call the rule on that? Okay. Alright, uh, I'll call the rule. Raymond?
Aye.
Peckroft?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
Ressler?
Aye.
Takeira?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, so, you know, the board is uh, seeking to approve the, the permit, Peter, but you know, now we need to come up with our, the details of our decision. And uh, you know, provide, you know, file it with the town clerk. Upon filing with the town clerk, there'll be a period of uh, roughly twenty days that will uh, where people will, uh, where, where appeals can be made. Once that period closes, then uh, the decision will be final at that time. Or, you know, once, if there are any appeals, you know, once they run their course, you know, one way or another. Um, at that time, it will be final, and then uh, after that, it would be um, re, recorded with the, in the registry of deeds. Um, Michael?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a question for you, Nathan, but also just for the group. In terms of designating someone to write the draft, um, I mean, you did Whitman, so if you wanted to do it, you could, but I'm also wondering if, you know, if Keith was interested, since, you know, you did the Wheelock site visit, and you, you were a professional regulator, you did such a good job, so. But as an associate member, it's also up to the board whether we'd want that to be, but I wanted to throw that out for consideration, since, you know, I'm not sure lots of people want to write this thing up, but it should get written up well. Um, so, and you're welcome, Keith.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thanks for that, uh. God knows what would have happened if I wasn't here at the meeting, um. I, I, I'm happy to do that if you've got, if, if there's some, um, if you can give me some examples to see kind of what the, the format is and the, the template. I'm happy to, if you guys, if you guys want me to be the scribe. Well, is, is there anyone else that's uh, you know, a full member of the board that would like to take a stab at that? So that would be, you know, uh, Steve, Deacon, Ashley, Robert, any, any, any of you?
If I had more time, I'd love to, but I just, it's just not a good idea for me right now. I'm sure Keith would do a much better job.
Okay, um.
About you, Nathan, do you want to do it?
No, I, I know. Um, I, I'm happy to uh, to, to assist though, um. So yeah, uh, Keith, I have uh, you know, we, we have the, you know, you can kind of reference what we did with the Whitman permit as a recent example, but more importantly, kind of like the, that has the template. And then, you know, I uh, I'll give you, I have some other materials that are more just um, in terms of the requirements for what needs to be included in a special permit decision and, you know, how it needs to be framed. You know, and part of the reason I was trying to ask so many questions during the hearing, right, is, you know, as far as special permits go, I'm, obviously, this, you know, this is a very straightforward case here. In my opinion, you know, it is, Peter elaborated, we don't really expect anyone is going to come forward and say they're harmed by this and, and challenge it. Uh, for what reason anyone would do that, uh, you know, we can't uh, surmise. So, all the same, uh, you know, just generally speaking, as far as special permits go, it's, it's more difficult to uphold the issuance of a permit than it is to, for the denial of one, right? The issuance of a permit, you know, allowing of the use, uh, is a kind of like a higher burden of, of proof, if you will. And it needs to be a well-framed decision in order to, you know, maintain any scrutiny. Versus a denial, which is more of like a, well, you know, we don't see that this uh, you know, fits in the neighborhood or whatever, and, but um, again, this is obviously a simpler case, so we don't really anticipate much. And while we're on the topic, I would like to see, you know, does anyone have any suggestions eh, for conditions that would be placed on this, if any? You know, we should, we should, we need to talk about some of this stuff, you know, as a board, we can't, I don't think we should just, you know, kind of give this to Keith and say, you know, make everything up.
I, I have a question. I'm wondering about stone walls, just looking at section eight-three and all the different uh, rural citing principles. Mr. Gees, are there stone walls that are uh, affected by this development at all?
Well, I would say, Ashley, one, that uh, at this point, the hearing is closed.
Oh, so this is the, the ex.
If anyone have any questions during the hearing, however, I think if we look at, you know, we, we, we have the plan for our consideration and.
So that's not like a site, that's not something that we would consider in the report that you're speaking of, in the special permit.
What's that?
It's not, that's not something that would be one of the conditions that we would look at when Keith is writing.
Well, that, that, I mean, the rural citing principles in the bylaw, I think uh, are, are, are probably, you know, something that needs to be considered by the board when
When we deliberate.
A, a decision uh, to approve a special permit, absolutely.
Okay.
And, you know, looking at the um, you know, we can look at the plan and.
If I, if I object just one second, Nate, there are stone walls there. In that, that area where we're working, there are no existing stone walls.
Yeah, I was gonna say, four of us walked it, and I, I don't recall seeing anything, any remnants of stone walls. And uh, the, the plan does not show any stone walls that on the uh, project site. Well, that's a good, you know, that's a good uh, consideration, um, so, let's see. Okay, so.
Uh, I'm just looking at the, the Whitman decision, and we only had one condition, at least on the second and final special permit. And that we, all that said was violation of any condition imposed by the ZBA shall constitute a violation of the special permit. But that's, we're specific to that one, because we, we approve it, go, and with the condition that it went back to the ZBA. Um, but I, I don't think that's relevant in this scenario.
Well, yeah, that was, that was an amendment to the, we issued the permit, and, you know, we kind of said, you know, you have to do this. And as uh, one of the things that we said was that, you know, the driveway um, needs to leave the uh, the tree intact and the stone wall intact on the driveway, and there was, uh, it would have been like nine or nine and a half feet at uh, in order to do that. And so then Whitman had to go to the ZBA and uh, request a variance um, for that. They issued a variance, but they issued it for ten feet because they said, you know, you need at least ten feet to have an emergency vehicle be able to access that. And because, and we said, you know, our bylaw says that any, you know, kind of change to the conditions would, you know, require going through the whole process again. So Whitman came back with another application to amend the one condition on the permit. And we had a hearing, and we said, yes, you can do it, and those were the conditions we implied to allow that uh, modification. Right, so the initial decision has all the other uh, conditions that are in there, like the Arber Bayes and everything. So if you're looking at that decision for a guide, you might want to look at the other one.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the other one right now.
I'm, I'm gonna read from, from this guide here on the uh, the section it has on, on decisions. Um, Deacon?
Oh, I was just wondering if we should, I mean, given that the Conservation Commission is so involved, should, should in the conditions, we say something about their involvement?
Yes, yes, we should. That's uh, in fact, that, that is uh, probably the, the, the one of the, the main things that we're gonna need to consider when uh, thinking of conditions, right? So, um, something along the lines of no uh, you know, so, I guess.
I, I mean, something like the, this decision says nothing about, about conservation and that's, those rules will have to be obeyed as well.
I mean, well, if, if you were to, you know, um, construct a driveway, uh, you, you need a uh, some sort of permit from the building inspector, like a, you know, curb cut from Highland Drive or uh, uh, something like that. That probably, we should have probably asked that question.
One point, the, the utility road is something that's been there since nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine. So the, that first stretch between Highland Nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, so the that first stretch between Highland Drive and that that middle utility pole. That was already put in back. Pre nineteen ninety.
Right.
And so that being quote unquote a curb cut, so that's already, it's it's already existing. So it's not like, I know on a public way, you absolutely have to get an approval for a curb cut. This is a private road. But and it, I it was never an issue, nobody, other than the fact that the utility company said, we can't help you unless you give us a road. To put in a pole, we need to get a truck in there. And so that's when we said, okay, we'll put a road in there.
I mean, but, uh, we can, we could put a, uh. A condition that says that, uh. You know.
We we can, we can see from the plan that there are, you know, wetlands. On the property, in fact, the proposed driveway goes over. A wetland, right, there's a proposed fifty foot by twelve foot bridge.
So for for that, we can say that, you know, you can't, you know, begin this work until you have, uh, an a an approved notice of intent from the Conservation Commission.
Oh, well, that's goes without saying, in my mind. Until I get the notice of intent, we're not putting a shovel in the ground. The only thing that we have to do prior to for the, uh, bridge company, they're requesting some core. Samples in the area of the abutment, so before I can even get to the point of the notice of intent. I have to get an approval from the Conservation Commission to allow us to do the core. Because they said you can't submit the notice of intent unless you have the full bridge design. And so once again, you know, cart before the horse. That's going to be one of the orders of business before we even file for the notice of intent, so I'm going to have to go to Conservation First. And ask them, can we get approval to to core samples where the abutments are going?
Nathan, I think the only condition that jumps out at me is the whole. Compliance with the Conservation Commission. You know, I mean. There's ineffective curb cut because trucks have been able to get in and out, even though it might not be an official one, um.
It's a private drive.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, like, I don't, we didn't discuss during the hearing, nor do I think. We necessarily care what the surface of their driveway is, um. I'm I'm sort of at a lack to think, looking at, looking at the Whitman thing is an example, I mean, that was such a tricky thing in terms of location and trees and walls and. All the other stuff is sort of. No standard, so. You know, Peter will have two years to complete it and he can always come back if he can't, um. And we're not required, I mean, we don't need a vegetative barrier or anything like that, um. All the other protective aspects, I think, are more the concom. Um, you know. Requirements. That's just my personal two cents, wouldn't get this other special permit for, I trust.
One other thing also. Michael, uh, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, usually it's. Two years from when you get your final permit to start the project. The the, this is.
Yeah, not from today.
Okay, this has already been over a year.
Yeah, yeah.
I have gotten with this, so, you know. When, uh, I mean, I really have to laugh at all of this because I thought this would be a. This would go a little bit quicker, but I'm realizing, no, this is gonna, this is gonna drag out. They're probably two years before we can even do anything. So, I mean, that being said, I just wanted to get the that clarified, I think. I think if you're going to put a restriction like that on there, it should be. From when I get the final approval, then start the clock, because.
I I think that's the way.
So many hurdles along the way that, you know, like, okay, we have to do this before we can do that, okay, this is going to take another four or five months, okay?
Peter, the clock, the clock starts the moment that we file our decision with the town clerk.
Okay.
Now, um, if if there are, there are remedies provided in statute, if. Uh, if you're delayed from beginning construction, part of that.
Okay, so I can come back to the to the board and say, look, we got hung up, this is where we're at. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, like if all the bridge suppliers in the world just go out of business and, um, you know, you have extreme trouble doing that, I mean, there was something similar that we did for. Uh, the cell tower right down the road from here, um, where they were trying to do underground cables and. It was during COVID, there was supply chain difficulties and, you know, the board was like, okay, you know. I'm pretty sure that was, uh, readily approved, right? Right, so, yeah, um, there's nothing we can do about that, that's, uh, that's that's.
Mm-hmm, okay, understood.
And I'm, you know, of course, you know, I think, uh. I'm trying to be as thorough as possible because there are some situations where if we, you know, deviate from statute, then the the authority to issue the permit can be removed from our hands.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Okay. So I'm not trying to belabor anything or, uh, make it any harder than it has to be, I assure you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess, uh. Does any, does anyone else have anything that they are are prepared to add at this point? Okay. I think, I think we'll leave it at that. Um, you know, Keith has a, you know, his marching orders and I'm gonna, uh, provide you with the template and, uh, some other materials to assist Keith. And, uh. You know, once that's, uh, drafted up, you know, you can send it to the board and I'll ask that board members can, you know, review it and any. Suggestions or thoughts, you know, kind of give it directly to Keith and not the whole board because we don't want to be. Uh, deliberating on it out of open session. And then the next time the board meets, uh. We will. You know, finalize it and then take final action by filing it with the town clerk so that, you know, that can. Move things forward. Now, I mean, you know. It's not final at this point, Peter, right, it doesn't become official until it's. With the town clerk. But, um, you know, the board has voted that we, you know. Are going to approve the the permit and, um. You know, that, you know, that it's up to you whether or not you want to, you know, proceed with your other, uh, endeavors that will be required for this project, or if you want to wait until the, uh. You know, a decision is filed with the town clerk, uh, that would be a conversation you should have with, uh, council if you have it or, you know, by, you know, doing your own due diligence on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, okay, and and once that twenty days has, it's twenty days from today?
No, no, it's twenty days from when, uh, the decision of the, the written decision of the board is filed with the town clerk.
Okay. All right, and I I assume Mateo will notify me once that.
Yes, yes, when, you know, there are stipulations that, you know, the applicant and the owner, the the owner of the parcel and the applicant, if it's different from the owner and. You know, people at the hearing that request for it, uh, to be sent to them and so on, you know, there's different requirements for who gets notified of it, yes.
Okay. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for putting time in on this and coming out, taking a look at the project. And I appreciate your, uh, so far approval on this and, uh, hopefully we can get things done.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, you too. Okay. Okay, let's see. All right, next we have, uh, some minutes. Do we want to, uh? Take a look at the minutes from twelve, nine, twenty twenty-four?
Nathan, you want me to, uh, screen share these as you talk about them?
Well, I'm not going to talk about them, but I, uh, I wonder if anyone would make a motion to approve them.
I will move to approve the minutes of December ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Second. Okay, um. You know, looking at the at these minutes, I know I I had only one, uh, minor, uh, thing I wanted to, um. Put a little bit more on was, uh. On the second, uh, page. Under serious community special permit inquiry submission, um, you know, Raymond accuses himself. I was going to, uh, ask that it be added that, uh. Um, Raymond also disclosed that he's a member on the board and is a supporter of, uh. Just, you know, just particularly to to, um, that he disclosed he's a. A member of the Board of Directors for the serious organization. Just to give a little bit of a. Cause that's. Not only is, uh, Robert in the butter, but he's also directly involved with the organization, so that it's kind of like, uh. Worth noting, I think.
I I've got a question for Mateo if I can. So. Mateo, I'm just. I know that I sent you edits, did you resend them out and should I explain my edits if you incorporated them, like which which version are we looking at so I can know if I need to comment or not?
Well, that's why I was gonna ask Nathan if you want me to screen share so you can see the one that I'm. That I'm marking up right now.
That would be helpful.
Yep. So you already had that in there?
I I just added this.
Oh, you did, okay. And, uh, did you, uh, those, I notice, I think, uh. Was Donna's name spelled correctly? Down on, I think it's, uh, page four.
That's correct, right?
I think so.
No, there's no A, it's an S.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, I'm I made a bunch of suggestions that are incorporated in here, so, um. If you want, Nathan, I can just go through them, but they're sort of. They're not hugely substantive.
Okay, well, I mean, that, you know, I, uh, I only just had the. The one I made and and making sure Donna's name was right, I didn't, I don't think I had any others and if. You know, those, the ones you had were not, uh, overly substantive, does anyone else have anything? I'm okay, uh.
Um, I think it is within A for Donna, I'm sorry, but on the document she and Jeff made with the questions. As in A.
Mcnickel and Tombs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is an A.
Okay, that. I'll have to apologize to her.
It's the Scottish Irish distinction, right? I don't know.
I have no idea. Changing my computer as we speak. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, that's weird, I might somehow on Google it says, uh. Without the A.
I found it with an H in it on Google. In the nickel part. I found lots of spellings of her name, but like Mateo said, if you go to her firm.
Yeah, no, okay, all right, that's, uh. Okay. Good.
Yeah, I'm looking at her email and she signs it with an A.
Okay, okay, there we go, I'm glad we beat that, um. All right, yeah, uh, anything else? Okay, um. If not, I'll call the roll, uh, Bonner?
Hi.
Take care.
Hi.
Um, who else we have, Raymond?
Hi.
Wrestler?
Hi.
Highcroft?
Hi.
Yeah, I'm on it. All right, so we'll prove these minutes, uh. Mateo will. Submit them. And I'm thinking that, uh, rather than try and go through all these minutes here tonight, uh. You know, I just want to get a sense of, uh, the board, how many people have had a chance to go through and review any minutes, uh, prior to December ninth?
Briefly, this evening.
Okay. Do people feel like it's, uh, okay to kind of, uh. Take some time, uh, take another month and, uh, have more time to review the minutes that we have currently on the agenda and, uh. Or, you know, the, uh, so the minutes I've listed on the agenda, I think is kind of more of a. Should be close to the list of all the outstanding minutes we have, um. And then, uh, I guess. I think Mateo, I I would ask that maybe you could just send out a a new email with, uh. You know, versions that incorporate any, you know, changes that you've received from members. Um, you know, just send out like a fresh copy for everyone to look at, um. And then we can, uh, go at this again and, uh, next month we'll do, uh, more than one.
Uh, Robert speaking.
Yes.
I I just want to say to review minutes so many months behind, uh, uh, so many months in the past, for me is, uh. Uh, is a pretty challenging issue, I'm I'm guessing many of you have a much better memory of it than I do, but I I'd ask if we could. Uh, to re- review the minutes of a meeting the month following.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think so. Do you, do you mean move, like, uh, are you saying that, uh? Moving forward, like we need to have minutes the month after the meeting takes place and not?
That'd be great, yes.
Yes, well, now now that we have a a land use clerk, that's, uh. That's gonna happen.
Yeah, I I mean, I should explain i- if I can just interject there, the reason Raymond, uh, Robert, there are so many of these is because of that period where there was such, there was some considerable turnover. And, um, minutes weren't being taken or minutes were being misplaced or lost. You you all shouldn't feel too bad, though, uh, if you saw what the Conservation Commission minutes look like that I'm going through right now, there's. There there are actually different versions and drafts and it's just, it's very exciting, I'm learning a lot. But I I I think Robert is right that going forward, it'd be great to. Address the previous meeting's minutes before the new meeting starts.
I just want to say, I appreciate your diligence, Mateo, thank you.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely, um.
So just to clarify, the EX ones. Are. Where this whole list, I'm assuming we don't have approved. And the ones that have the EX, can you just explain that again, Nathan, since you made that notation?
So the ones with the EX include a portion of the meeting in executive session. Um, however, they, there's. Agenda items for those meetings that were held in open session, right, so there's minutes that need to be approved, reviewed and approved in open session almost.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful.
I wonder if it might be helpful to, or just a thought, like to group them together, to do like five next month, five, five the next month, so I I don't feel like I have to review ten months worth of meetings.
Right, right.
For the next one, it's a lot.
I I know, understood, understood, I, uh. You know, I mean, I'm thinking probably the. Best thing is to kind of go in reverse order, but I I, you know, um, we can. So let's, uh, let's say that. So let's let's say that next month. We'll. We'll tackle the minutes from today. And. Give me a second here.
That makes it worse, given Robert's point.
What?
Like if we do the next, what shouldn't we start the oldest first?
Well, I mean, you know, for example, like today, we approved the meeting the minutes from last month, and it's kind of like, you know, we remember it. The. But, you know, for example, the media, the minutes from. October, you know, we'll probably remember it, the the minutes from, you know. You know, from January and February, that's that's already far back enough where, you know, it doesn't really matter much if we look at that. In February or or March or April, it's it's so far back that, you know, it's just, you know. Yeah, I don't know if another month makes difference, but I think, you know. The more recent ones that are still kind of in our in our memory.
Okay.
That's my thinking on it. I mean, you know, I'm not, I don't, I don't really care either way. Does anyone else? Think we should go from all this, you know, get the do the oldest ones first? Okay. Yeah, all right, we do the oldest one first. Except for the we will, we are going to stick to doing the immediately prior month. Right? So that the, you know. So next month we'll do January and then we'll go. And then we'll do January twenty twenty four, February twenty twenty four and. March twenty twenty four and April twenty twenty four, right? So January through April twenty twenty four. So I'm going to ask Mateo. To just if. Well, actually, okay. That's another thing is I'm not sure those meetings are are due, but they I'm not sure that Mateo has drafts for them yet. So I'll tell you what, we'll take it offline and we'll figure it out. You know, we'll we'll go with, we'll look at the drafts that Mateo has provided, you know, we'll get out whatever current drafts there are. You know, we'll put it out there so we can say, all right, these are the ones we're going to review. And. That way you can have it. And, you know, not have this big ginormous list and not know which one we're doing. It'll give some clarity. Okay?
So which ones are we looking at for?
We're going to.
You're gonna send an email?
Yeah, we're gonna send an email.
Okay, all right. I'll check it out.
Yeah, no, you know, I mean, we're in a bit of a mess with this, but, you know, we are. Moving in the right direction, believe it or not. Right now it seems a little bit sluggish, but we'll get there, you know, we've got a bunch of drafts out there, which is like so much better than we were. Just two months ago. Okay?
I will I will also add if if there are challenges remembering what was discussed in the past, the YouTube videos. Are all available, so if you. Can do it, you could sit down and watch the meeting again or certain parts of the meeting. You can also set the YouTube videos on double speed, which makes Michael's voice really fantastic.
I'll send it to my kids.
I'm gonna say personally, you know, I think, you know, I'll be kind of going over what Mateo does and. Unless. I read something and say, you know. I feel like there needs to be more to that, or that doesn't seem, did I say that? Or, you know, something like that. Did? Did Ashley say that? Right, you know? I'm not gonna go through the video, you know, I'm I'm. I'm only gonna go back to the video if there if there's something I have a question on, and I feel like I need to know. That's that's personally my my stance on it, you know, I mean, each. Each to their own on this. Let's move on. Now, we have a zoning bylaw discussion pertaining to accessory dwelling units in particular. Same agenda item that's been on there last two months and includes some drafts that were sent out by Mike on the last week or so. So I'll ask Michael to bring the. Share the draft for the. For the ADU amendment, and I'm going to just profess the discussion. With, I think. Kind of the direction that. You know. I think a good direction for us to go is more or less to. Think of this amendment. Or what will be an amendment as what is needed to bring the Suitsbury bylaw into compliance. With state law. The statute. And, you know, there may be. Some other things that we want to do, right? We're talking about a lot of different things here. So there may be other amendments that are going to be. You know, forthwith that may or may not make it into this year's town meeting. But. You know. You know. We can, we can entertain. Arguments to the contrary, but kind of doing. You know, what is needed to bring us into compliance with. With the statute. Could be the focus of. You know, one amendment to say, so we can say, all right, you know, this this needs to be done. So that we're in compliance with state law. And there may be other considerations that. Arise out of this that we really want to address and. And we can decide whether or not that's a separate amendment or goes in, but for now, the, you know, the the kind of direction we went was to. Have this be more or less. Bring it bringing us up to par and then. Some some additional questions we might consider. So, Michael.
Okay. So. Everything that Nathan just said, so I think I'll preface it, I'm. You all have this, but I'll just walk us through. So. I had a conversation with Donna, I don't know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. And had a list of questions and. The takeaway, I think. Was, you know, originally when we spoke last month or the month prior, the idea was to sort of like. Take advantage of opening up the bylaws, look at ADUs to do some additional things that could look at. Affordable housing. Donna's very clear message was this is new, there's lots of. Questions about it. And the way I started thinking about her recommendation is that. You don't want to let the genie out of the bottle because then you can't stick it back in. So to be a little bit more intentional and. Do it slow because. You know, the legislature wrote stuff and now the. Administration has got draft regulations. We don't even have final regulations yet. I think. They're coming out very shortly, but. So the idea that Donna had was, do you need to comply? Do a little extra if you want to, but don't go wild, because. If something changes, it's it's a little hard to reverse course. So just to walk you these questions. So we had talked at the previous meeting, do we want to have more than one ADU? And we're allowed to. According to the draft regs and the statute, it would be regulated by a special permit. This is the place where Donna advises to wait until the law gets more settled. Currently. Our ADU says it has to be on forty five square thousand fair square feet. We could, that would basically allow for nonconforming. Lots if we wanted to keep that. But a lot of this is. Essentially trying to tie it to what's required for single dwelling units. And so if you built a single dwelling unit now, you'd need ninety thousand. So she doesn't have a strong opinion. It's really sort of us if we want to allow nonconforming lots to have ADUs on them. The question was, do we allow ADUs on parcels that are multifamily dwelling units? I didn't get into a conversation about that, but again, she was sort of saying, let things settle out a little bit. We can always revisit that next year if we wanted to. In terms of the setbacks. It has to be the same or more flexible than a single family dwelling unit. So the whole idea with. The legislation is that. You can't make this more restrictive than you would for a single family dwelling unit. So presumably we'd have the same ones if we wanted to. The idea of originally I had put something in about placement and orientation. There's some. Discussion, some stuff in our current bylaws about. Placement of single family dwelling units in terms of consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and that specifically is not allowed. So you can't put anything in there. There's a question that. Jeff had talked about, and we I had put in a previous version about time limits on a rental. To maybe avoid ADUs becoming like Airbnbs. And Donna said it's not clear in the current like regulations if you can put time limits on a rental. So her suggestion was. Get it passed. If it's unclear, you don't want the AG kicking it back. We've definitely had enough of that, so. This might be something that if things get settled, we can revisit next year, is I think the message from her. And. Again, with rentals, if there was documentation required, but that would be moot if we're waiting. Candidate you had be prohibited from having a home occupation. So doing business, I didn't discuss it with Donna. I think the takeaway is it needs to be consistent with singly family homes, so. Right now, in a similarly, single family dwelling, you can have a home occupation. You can do stuff in your home. So I think rather than call that out, we just go to leave it. I can't imagine it was nine hundred square foot. Place people are going to have anything extensive in terms of home occupation. And then the last question, which is sort of a discussion that I know Nathan and I. Wanted to lift up for our our group was, do we allow mobile homes to be ADUs? And Donna was very strong in her opinion about this. I think one thing that she talked about was that. Mobile homes, which are, you know, cited in our zoning bylaw. Are now. The terminology is manufactured home, not mobile homes. And my understanding, although I haven't done really deep. Research in this is mobile homes or I mean manufactured homes include. Like what you would traditionally think is a mobile home. And then also I would assume modular homes. You know, so a modular home, which is built in a factory, is going to be built to a different standard. It has a different sort of characteristic than a than a mobile home. So. Donna basically said for now. Wait and see, because the idea would be. It's it's sort of loaded, you know, because you could have people coming in and putting in ADUs. And if they were mobile homes, is that what we want? And what's residents going to respond? So. I think we can have a conversation now, but again, I think this is. This is probably the most complicated thing that we would want to wait for. So that's. All the daughter questions and responses before I sort of. Move up to what I share with you all. Do you guys have questions? Okay, let's scroll up. And so some of this is just repeat. So we're going to change the use table to allow accessory dwelling units by right. And. Because. Single family homes can be. In all the districts, it would. Have it there. And there's a footnote in table one. I'm forgetting exactly what it says at this point, but it's contradictory. So to remove that. Basically, accessory dwelling units are in four dot four dash two. And to remind you all, the blue is the stuff that is open for discussion. The red is state law at this point. So. The purpose was just be to help the town meet its housing needs, and I suggested while maintaining consistent with the existing zoning. Just because that's the value that we'd want to maintain. A changes so we would only have. One ADU. Per lot unless we have a different discussion, I suggested the ninety thousand, which is consistent with what a single family would have. And then Jeffrey, this is. Referencing on nonconforming lots, it's already in our bylaw. So it's just referencing what currently exists. Setbacks, I just made a reference to the dimensional table that already exists, so that would be consistent with what a single family home has. There would be no additional curb cuts or driveways. Beyond what's allowed for one single family dwelling. And let's see, this is all the red is required. So you have to have an additional minimum of one street off parking space. Number five is the square footage. And it gives compliance in terms of what it has to look like. I changed the date. I think I'll change the date to the April, depending on when town meeting is, whether it's the end of April or May tenth, it's one of those two. I'll change that. And then one of the questions that Jeff Lacy actually had suggested. For Conway and suggested for us was that. Currently, accessory dwelling unit could be located no more than seventy five feet from the primary dwelling. Jeff had suggested a hundred feet. Definitely, we can discuss that more. I don't think we've discussed it since. This is about. I think we should just confirm this amongst ourselves, but more common driveways. What currently exists in the language is no accessory apartment shall be approved if will result in more than six dwellings on a common driveway. So an ADU would count as a dwelling. And if you add them all up. So it says. So I'm just suggesting we strike this because it's already in the other section. And just leave it be, so we don't have to call it out.
Michael, can you what we go over that? What are we looking at here? This is.
Yeah, this is. So in our common driveway regulations. You can only so this section eight point six dash two B about common driveways.
Right.
It currently says no. It it talks about that you can't have more than six. Dwellings on a common driveway, and there's a little calculation about it. In our current. ADU language, it says this crossed out part. It says no accessory. So I'm basically saying, let's just not call that out, you know, it's it's explained elsewhere. We don't have to step in anything. If if it comes to that, we can, we can have a conversation about it. But. I don't think we need to stick our finger in the hornet's nest if that's the correct expression. And then. Nathan and I discovered, we actually have a shootsbury house number bylaw, which requires that every dwelling has a house number. And so. I was recommending that every ADU also has a. House number so that if there's an emergency situation. The responders know where they're going. So it's just clearly marked. You don't have to knock on the wrong door and then go to the right door. This red is the official. New definition from statute. So that's the totality of it. So it's it's much more streamlined where it's less ambitious. It sort of stays away from the things Donna says we don't really know yet. So. And I guess you guys have questions or comments? Robert, you're muted, but I see you got a question.
So. An ADU can share the septic system of the main unit.
I think it's so the way it's written, because I saw your email earlier. It has to be approved by the Board of Health. So if you had, this is my assumption, we should check it, but I didn't have time between reading your email and doing this, but. If you had a primary dwelling that had. Enough water and a big enough septic that it was zoned for the capacity of an ADU, then I think you could share it. But, you know, so if you had a two bedroom. House, right? There's a primary dwelling unit and the septic was for, you know, four people. And then you had a dwelling, ADU that could have another two people. If your septic didn't support enough for six, you couldn't share it. You'd have to have a big enough septic and enough water, but I think that's on the Board of Health and. I'm not sure, let me see.
Michael, that that is a Board of Health issue, decision.
Yeah, yeah.
The ADU can share the electricity from the main house, or does it have to have to separate electricity?
Here, so I'm just sort of look at this for a sec. As I wrote. So it's you guys should still see this, right?
Yeah.
So where it says accessory apartment shall meet the standards of the state building code, the state environmental code. I think that would be where. Electricity part would come in, Robert, so that. You would have to meet code and code. I'm sure they they talk about that kind of stuff. Well, we wouldn't, in terms of the, I think Steve's right with the. With the septic and the water. I feel like at some point there was something in here that I put in that it would conform with all the other permits and requirements of the shootsbury, you know, regulations. I don't know if I took that out by mistake or if I just imagined it, but. I don't, besides this thing about being consistent with the state building code, I don't think we get into. If we can share it or not, but I think it's got to be adequate, whatever adequate is defined as.
Yeah, and again, Michael, I would think that's a building inspector decision.
Yeah.
An accessory. An accessory dwelling unit. Does, does a state law prohibit an accessory dwelling unit from being simply a bedroom?
Yes. It's, it's a. Here, where's this, it's, it's this part right here, I'll make it a little bigger, but it says, uh. Let's see.
It, it has to meet all the criteria of a, of a dwelling unit, right, so it has its own electrical service, its own kitchen, its own bathroom.
Go down to number six, Michael.
Yeah, there it is, I knew it was there somewhere, thank you. So it's got to have a separate entrance, a kitchen, one bedroom, bathroom with same toilet and bathing facilities.
It's the state, state law duplicated in the ordinance in the bylaw.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, Robert, to your, you know, to kind of like address your question, you know, the, this is. You know, a use that's allowable by right, and, you know, if. You know, if somebody wants to rent out a bedroom in their house, that's not the topic under discussion. You know, anyone, you know, you can, you know, there's nothing out, there's nothing currently in the. In statute or in shootsbury zoning, shootsbury zoning by law doesn't regulate. Whether or not you can rent out a bedroom in your house. To someone.
But you couldn't, you couldn't build like a cabin, it's just the bedroom. That doesn't have the other stuff.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, and. Certainly, and you know, certainly not under the protections afforded accessory dwelling units.
Got it, thank you.
You can let your teenager sleep there, that's about it.
Right. Tom.
Thanks. I wanted to mention about that number six that's on the screen now. It doesn't use the same words as if you scroll down further to what the state definition is of an accessory dwelling unit. Yeah, like, number six above has the word kitchen, number six above has the word bedroom. And I think the state thing that we're looking at now captures those items with like better general language, like inclusive of sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities. So I wanted to know if maybe number six needs to be tweaked in order to be less specific. You know, why does it need a bedroom, you can sleep in a studio. Why does it need a kitchen as opposed to just a place to cook? So I, I wanted to know if maybe we should look at number six above and consider, and even looking at what we're looking at right now. Where it says accessory apartment and then accessory dwelling unit, maybe we have to like stop using the word apartment as well.
Yeah.
But it was mostly with number six above that I noticed a lot of differences in small words that were saying the same thing. Just wanted to alert us all to that.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, I mean, I, I think given that. I, I would change six and sort of swap in the language from the definition.
But six is kind of a repeat of the. I guess that's what also just struck me is it's redundant.
Yeah, we could just do that. Because it is, it's defined in the definition section, so.
Right. And the definition section doesn't include the entire definition. That you sent us, like, it's kind of split up in our document here into a few different parts in terms of the size and. The short term rental aspects, but like the state definition has a very long definition that goes, I think through one, two, three and four. The definition we're looking at number five right now goes to one and. Or actually not that, but the definition down below, do you know what I'm referring to in the state?
I do, I, yeah, I think it's only five and the definition, I basically. Lit out this, the size and all this stuff in five, because. As a reader, it seemed like, you know, you would, you would say, hey, what does it need, it needs this stuff. And then what are the specs, or this stuff, so if, if, if people want to, we can just take. Five out and throw it in the definition, but it didn't sort of, it doesn't fit the way our bylaw usually is. Where we get that level of specificity in the definition, it seemed like if it was in there, it'd be okay, but. If people preferred to have both of them in, in the definition section, that would, you know, I don't think it would. There's nothing bad about doing that, I was, I was basically split it up for readability.
Yeah, I get that, it just struck me as odd for like, having the definition of a term not be completely there where it's. Alerted to a reader, like this will be his definition, and it might be a, it might mean like changing our bylaw a little bit. And it might mean a redundancy here or there, referring twice maybe to nine hundred square feet of the document.
So you suggest in keeping this and then adding it on also in the definition?
If you scroll down, please, to the part that we mean on the beginning of the next page, that there. Is about a third of the entire state definition. And so that, I was just craving somewhere that we had an exact repeat of the state definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is, but we don't. We only have like an excerpt of it, what we're looking at now.
Well, part of the state definition notes that. You know, subject to reasonable regulation of municipality, which is what this is. So I think, you know. We don't need to repeat that in our bylaw, but. I mean, your other point about, you know, the, some of the, like a studio versus a kitchen, there is a. Important distinction, right, we don't, we don't want to require a kitchen be in an ADU, because that's not what the statute says, it says. Uh, what, cooking facilities, right?
Yeah.
Right, so, that's, that's, that's the kind of thing we need to clean up, which I think, you know, and. And then, yeah, I think, yeah, the regulations seem to, you know, the regulations go into like what is defined as gross floor area. Things like that.
Yeah, this is, this stuff is defined by statute.
So a quick question, are we using accessory dwelling unit or accessory, because I see in red accessory apartment just above.
Yeah, I think we got a, to Tom's point, we should just make it all dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling unit, that's, that's what we'll go with. Yeah, I mean.
The title of the section is a, is accessory apartments too.
Not anymore. Thank you, Deacon. Such power we have.
So the nine hundred number is going to.
I'm sorry, Deacon, Robert, here's where it says, right at the beginning. All housing developments, this is already exists in here, but it says all housing developers comply with applicable requirements of the Board of Health. I'm sorry, Deacon, what were you saying?
Um, so the nine hundred number replaces our eight hundred number.
Correct.
Okay. In that state.
Yes.
Now, so what do we think about this, you know, like the. So the nine hundred square, I mean, that, there's nine hundred square feet. And then there's this, this gross floor area. And, you know, that is, as I understand it, that's spelled out in the regulations document, right, Michael?
Yeah, this, this right here, number five is, is what this, the state law is.
That's what the, that's what the regulations are.
No, this, this is from the law, not even the regulations.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah. I mean, this duplication, like they, they cite this in the regulations, but this actually, this, this is, as Tom said, this is part of the definition that the law says. An ADU is.
Can you, do you have any, like, can you show us that?
The regulations?
No, the law.
The law, yes, I can, give me a second here. The right one. Alright.
That's alright. We're gonna.
Okay, yeah, it's, yeah, I'll share it. This, this is the definition that Tom was referencing. So it's got to have a separate entrance with the things you were just talking about, there's the size, which is number two. And then there's additional restrictions. Or not restrictions. So we can put in short term rentals, but Donna was. Very, so that's the first part. And then this is some of the other specific things, so. Some of this is that you. Are in a municipality that's within half a mile of computer commuter rail or subway station or ferry or bus station, then it's. It's more mandatory, and that's the totality of it, so it's just these two sections, and then the regulations are much longer because.
So what I'm getting at is that some of that's more specific language that's in the regulations. Perhaps we need not put it in our bylaw. Because, you know, were that to change, then, you know, now we're, you know, whatever, we can reference the regulations. And keep it simpler, and then if it changes, we don't have to go back to it. Anyone else has any different thoughts than that?
Well, may, maybe then it goes, if we put it in definitions, because as a courtesy to somebody who's reading this bylaw, who's interested in an AC. You, it would be helpful.
Would to put, to put what, what gross floor area is in our, the definitions in our bylaw?
Yeah, in other words, if, if, as you say, if state changes. This requirement, then we would have to change our bylaw, if it's in the bylaw, that's your point, if it's in definitions, we don't have to worry about, we just change the definition.
That's still a bylaw change.
What's that?
It's still a bylaw change, well, I mean, you know, it's, so you're saying that, you know, spelling out exactly what gross floor area is, should be in the.
Only as a, as a courtesy to somebody who's investigating an accessory unit. Otherwise, I have to go searching for it in, in the state statute, and it's just, as I said, just a courtesy.
Yeah, well, you know, it's interesting, because in the solar one, up until the most recent version that got rejected. When Jeff designed the original two thousand sixteen, the. Acreage size of one and a half to fifteen acres max was in definitions. So if you read the, like, the four pages of the solar bylaw, it never said anything, and like, we all knew that it was a fifteen acre. Cap on size, but I, for, even for me, I'd like read it, I'm like, where is that, I know it's here somewhere. And then I'd have to remember it was in the definitions, so like, that was part of my thinking that. I think, you know, if we do them both, the other thing I'm thinking based on Nathan, what you said is. There's some language we can put in here that basically says, this is the deal, unless, you know, it changes in, you know, whatever the state.
That works, that works.
And we can like put the, attach, put the CMR on our webpage next to the bylaw too.
Yeah. Well, it's, so it's, it's this thing right here, so this would.
Right.
CMR, you know, whatever, so this, that would, that would rule if anything ever changed.
Right.
So.
But, you know, I mean, and then, you know, this may be a good question for Donna, you know, when we do a legal review later. You know, we're, I think, I think it's time to wrap up here, I don't know if anyone wants to keep going more, but.
I guess I just have one. So I think for next steps, I'll redo this based on this conversation, and then I'll share it out again. You want me to? Yeah, I'll stop there, Nathan, what do you want to do next?
Well, one thing I think, so what we're going to need to do is, is. Get the, translate this into a warrant article. Because, you know, the challenge is going to be.
It is, it's written that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just going to be like, so it's like. There's a few things. Because there's a few different sections, right, we have, you know, four dot four, four dot, four dot two.
Yeah, here, I'll show you, I'll just, I'll just share it again real quickly.
Oh, yeah, no, I see that at the top.
Yeah. That's what we've done before.
Okay. No, I mean, I think, you know, just, it's, it's close, but there's some, you know, like, so, you know, we changed the title of accessory.
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
So, you know, kind of be like, you know, to, you know, so to, you know, section four point four dash two, you know, is gonna, you know. The accessory apartments is going to be renamed, you know, accessory dwelling units, and will be completely replaced with the following text, right, you know, section four about. Four housing options, well, you know. You know, are we going to just put it, the, the entire text, or just, you know, the reference to, you know, the reference to accessory apartments will be changed to a reference to accessory dwelling units. And tiny houses or whatever, but, and then. Yeah.
Well, so. Sort of, but I think it's already there, so, like that language, you know, so we don't know what the warrant article is, but it's basically to see if the town will vote to amend that. The zoning bylaw by amending in each of the sections, so the section three point one dash one is the use table, four point four dash two is accessory apartments. And section thirteen dot two is definition, so those are the three sections that are getting tweaked. Actually have to put in four point four for housing. I gotta add that, but, and then just, we'll do what we usually do, which is identify what the new language is, but. The text will, the text will show up as in the amended form, so people will be reading it. And we'll have, you know, we can have the, the color, once we. Once we're set, I'll just pick out the things that are not, we're not doing, and just have it, you know, I think it's worthwhile differentiating. Requirements by the state and things that we're doing, but basically people will take away what the change language is, so. I think that's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Did you want me to just say anything about tiny houses, you want to wait on that?
Right, yeah, we, we do have the tiny, so there's a tiny house thing there. Yeah. I mean, essentially, you know, what, what I was saying to Michael offline was that, you know, the state building code. You know, the most recent ver- revision of it adopts. And it's now appendix AQ, I believe.
In the state?
Appendix.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I forget, it's, it's not exactly. What, it's not Q, it's something tweaked.
I think it's AQ.
Okay, you could be right.
Well, and, and, you know, I mean, you go and you look at the state website, look up building code, and you get this document, and. You know, to, to make the state building code, they're referencing several different documents that are created by the International Standards Organization or whatever it is. And they go section by section, and it says that we're going to adopt it as is, we're going to adopt it and add a section, we're going to amend it, you know. So the document is completely unreadable, it's like a building code, and I think. And I think, you know, somebody must go and put it together and like, you know, then you get a final document of what it looks like, but that's not what's posted on the, as, you know, the CMR on the, on the website. So, um, but yeah, they say they adopt appendix AQ and they add a, a section for egress. So it's in there, right? So if, you know, the building inspector receives any plans that, you know, meet that criteria and see that there's. Any reason why they wouldn't approve them. And Michael was suggesting that there may be some benefit for adding some distinction. You know, so right now, you know, like I said, we're trying to, you know, true up our bylaw to meet the state law, you know, the question of mobile homes, and at least in this amendment, we're leaving alone. And.
Are we talking about the tiny home?
Yeah, we're talking about whether an accessory dwelling unit, uh, whether a manufactured home or a, a trailer or mobile home or something to that effect that would, you know, meet the definition of a mobile home under our current bylaw. You know, the question of whether or not that could be an accessory, a protected use. Um, as an accessory dwelling unit. You know. I think, uh. Because the regulations that, the draft regulations that came out said that. If it was a modular home, that it would be protected by the state, by the statute. But the statute does not include manufactured homes, which means mobile homes, right? So as of now. In this amendment, we're not gonna do anything to tweak our current position, you know, the current bylaw, position that the bylaw has on mobile homes. Which is to have, allow only temporary use if you're reconstructing your home and so on and so forth. Now, if we wanna. Do another warrant article, another amendment proposal. That touches on that, that's something that we can do. And, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I haven't got as far as I would have hoped, you know, I spent the holidays, things have been really busy, but I am still. Trying to work on, um, getting a forum going to kind of get some of these questions out to the public. And I, I, I do suspect that I, I may, you know, possibly this month or, or. You know, I'm not sure, but, you know, that we might end up having a, hopefully a meeting where we can go, maybe the town hall or at least an additional meeting where we can just. Designate some time to talk about this. Already in February, we're gonna have a, a hearing on the. Uh, serious special permit application, right? So we're gonna need a set of time, aside some additional time. Um, if we wanna go over further questions. It may be the case that some of this is gonna have to, is not gonna make it into town meeting this year, but, you know, we're gonna kind of keep. We're just gonna keep things moving, right? And then, you know, there may be a special town meeting we can jump in, but. You know, my intention is to just kind of. Try to, try to add some focus to some of the periphery questions to consider and that we may consider for subsequent amendments. Um, so I see Robert.
I would aiming, I would like to aim to have a tiny home, uh. Proposed bylaw on the agenda for the town meeting.
Well, I think, you know.
Back up in, Nathan?
Yes.
Yeah, so I sent out. This version of the tiny home, which is that also trimmed down from the last time. And I think because we have clarity that it's already in the building, the state building code, the question that. I posed to Nathan, which I sort of think makes sense, but it's really, you know, we should discuss it is. Do we wanna define tiny house? Um, you know, using the international definition, so we're not inventing anything, but calling it out so that. You know, a tiny house could be a primary dwelling unit. Um, it could be accessory dwelling unit, but. Because. The state code is so inaccessible to a reader. That we can just, we can make it clear that if someone wants to come and say they wanna build a tiny house, we have a definition for what it is. We make clear that it can be, you know, either a primary dwelling or an accessory dwelling. It references the state building code. It reinforces that it's gotta be permanent and not mobile. Uh, reinforces it has to have a parking space. Um, so. You know, it doesn't talk about, I, I think, I would agree with Nathan that like pushing aside. Mobile and manufactured home is the conversation for ADUs or tiny homes is, that's really confusing, but we can define in our bylaws. If we wanted to, what a tiny house is and just have it be really straightforward. And then if people wanna do it. They'll have some kind of guidance, but, um, I don't know what people think. He thinks something.
I mean, I guess, you know, I would say, you know, thinking about a little bit more, Michael, that, you know, because. You know, appendix AQ has been incorporated into the state building code, you know, adding a definition of a tiny home or a tiny house into the bylaw.
This is the, this is the one that they have, it came from the international folks, so it's, it's all the same.
Right, oh, tiny house, right, a detached structure containing a dwelling unit with a maximum of 400 square feet.
Yeah.
Of a living space, right? You know, and we could potentially just add to it, you know, or I don't know, I don't know if it's appropriate to make a note in definitions that. You know, like, you know, the, nothing in the bylaw would, you know, prevent, uh. You know, uh, this, a, a tiny house being pursued as a single family, as a resident. As long as it complies with all provisions in the bylaw.
Yeah.
And the building code.
Yeah, I think A sort of says it, that it can be a primary or an accessory dwelling.
Does, well, right, yeah, yeah.
It does. I mean, the new information that's in A is that it may be a primary dwelling because the A, the accessory dwelling is already covered.
Right. And I think it's up, you know. One can imagine a tiny house being either.
Yes.
And I think, you know, the, the, if someone wanted to build a. The thing that I'm unclear about is like, if you wanna build a tiny house, when you go for your building permit, you have to tell them. Is it an ADU or a primary dwelling unit? Then it has to comply with whatever applicable things, if, if there's differences. So it's just FYI, I can't get my hand down, but I don't have it raised anymore.
What about you, Robert?
Um, yes, I would like to speak.
Okay.
I'm just interested in comparing the, uh, Nantucket definition of tiny home with our own. I like the way, uh, Michael has it, a tiny home shall be. On a foundation or otherwise made permanent in its location. Nantucket has an interesting, uh, comparison. It says a. A, um. Shall be constructed on a movable trailer to be attached to a foundation. So theoretically, I guess. Uh, someone could construct a tiny home on a movable trailer, which is the way they usually constructed, but, uh. As, uh, section D says, shall be on a foundation or permanent in its location. So I, I, I gather probably that would, that would be a possibility. Um, what comes up for me is, um, would we want to add something like Nantucket did? That a tiny house shall not be a recreational vehicle, commonly known as an RV. Auto home, shipping container, motor vehicle, semi-trailer, camper or boat. And, um, thinking about that because I would, uh, not like to see the article defeated because. Uh, we haven't said it.
That, I, I. I think it would help for clarity. I guess my only question, Robert, which I don't know the answer to, was like. If we say it, we start back, get backing into the mobile home conversation, which we're not prepared for. Although, listening to that conversation, I'd love to see a boat in the middle of the forest, use as a tiny home. That would be sort of fun.
I mean, aren't, aren't there already like health department rules and stuff about living in a trailer that doesn't have. Septic or water?
And, yeah, it wouldn't be able to comply, so.
To receive a certificate of occupancy, you need to have. You know, septic and well, you know, water permits approved by the board of health.
So the thing I would say. Yeah, the thing I would just say is like an A, the trigger is if we're saying it could be a primary dwelling or an accessory dwelling, that means that. Any tiny house has to comply with all the regulations for either one of those things. So septic, water, electric setbacks, the whole nine yards. So you, you pick, if you're gonna be primary dwelling, everything that we require for primary dwelling, it has to be, it's just smaller. And if it's an accessory dwelling unit, it would have to comply with everything we just previously discussed for ADUs, just smaller. Go for it, Keith.
Yeah, I can't find my little button.
I traded for mine.
So it, I guess I'm trying to figure out why we would need a separate section for tiny houses if they're covered under the building code. To, if somebody wants to build a house, no matter what size, whether it's tiny or medium or giant, if it meets the building code, do we have to? Why would we call it out in our own bylaw, I guess?
I, well, my, my thinking is it's sort of. User friendliness because, you know, so like, I remember. When I was on school committee and I would write policies, people would say, well, it's there, we don't have to say it. Well, 99% of the people who are going to a school committee policy book, never gonna look at the state stuff. They're gonna look at the local one, if that. And given that the state building codes are really convoluted because, like. Natalie Blay told me that it was incorporated and then I told Nathan and I was like, Nathan, I can't find it, you know? And like, I figured if I can't find it, like, no one's gonna, you know, like, it's gonna be a small percentage of people that could find this thing. So it was mostly.
I found it, but it took a minute.
Yeah, you know, like I was talking, I don't, Nathan, if you told me this, or maybe Donna did that, Orange is thinking of doing this. So like, it's, you know, it's becoming a thing that people are gonna do. So it seemed like. If we call it out. And we can say, I think that one of the things for me that's key is to be able, that first is A, to say, hey, if you wanna build a small unit. You can be either a primary or be an ADU. And then all of a sudden it kicks in everything else. Because otherwise, I think people would say, I wanna build a tiny house, what is it? You know, and we, and then I'd hate for us to have to sort of get involved and say, well. If it's the only building on the property, then it's by, you know, by definition, it's primary. But if you got another thing and you're within a certain limitations, all the stuff for your ADU. So it's sort of to get rid of that confusion on the front end is, but your point is, I mean, it's, it's there, so it's not essential from a legal perspective.
Right, it's not essential. So I mean, I, I can, I can see the value of kind of acknowledging, you know, like tiny homes have been added to the state building code and we can. You know, uh, note that in our bylaw and say that, you know, you can build a tiny home, providing you, you know, comply with any provisions in this bylaw.
Yeah, whether it's gonna be a primary or an ADU.
Right, or, you know, I don't know if there's anything else you could put in there, but I mean, that's, uh. That's probably it, right?
Yeah, those are the triggers. It's like, you know, it's small, you're one of these things and we got everything else written up about those things, so.
You could.
So then, back to, to Robert's observation about, and I, I have seen, you know, people that do these, and so they build them on trailers or some kind of mobile.
But I guess if that's covered in the building code, that they have to be on a, some kind of foundation, then. That's answered, I guess. Well, I don't know if that's in the building code per se.
Oh, it's not, okay.
You know, that's in our bylaw.
Ah, gotcha.
Well, in our bylaw, you know.
Well, it's looking at D, it says, shall be on a foundation or made permanent in its location in accordance with Massachusetts State Building Code.
Uh, that, that part is, C is correct.
Okay.
Appendix Q is in the state building code. I had a sense that. It's up to the towns to adopt it. Uh, and what Shrewsbury is doing is adopting the building code, uh, appendix IQ. Which, uh, makes a, an exception, I would gather, to what one has to do to get a building permit to build a single family home in Shrewsbury.
I don't think we adopt the building code. A building code is like state mandated. I guess that there may be things that are permitted under the building code that we can prohibit in our bylaw. Um, but I don't think we need to, you know, like, there's no, there's nothing that we would need to adopt. Um, in the state building code to allow on the town. But, you know, I mean, I do think there's some value in putting it in there. You know, just to kind of make it accessible that it's now, oh, yeah, you can build it here, but I mean, it's just, uh. You know, and then potentially adding clarity around, um. Yeah, so, um. So in the, in the state building code. The tiny home shall be on a foundation or otherwise made permanent in its location, right? So that's, uh. Otherwise made permanent. I don't know how that could differ from. Being on a foundation.
I think that's the same. It, I think it's the whole boat was all the weird things. Robert, what was, what was that list again? It can't be a boat and other.
The list, one sec. A text. The tiny house shall not be a recreational vehicle, commonly known as an RV, auto home, shipping, shipping container. Motor vehicle, semi-trailer, camper or boat.
No, okay, so what if you put any of those that Robert just mentioned on a permanent foundation?
Well, no, that, I think if we add what Robert's saying, then, then they wouldn't be, so.
I know, I understood, understood.
Current, if we don't put it in, they probably, if they comply with everything else. You know, like if they had the kitchen facilities and the bathroom facilities and.
And septic and water.
Yeah.
I don't see any downside to adding the, the language that Robert's talking about.
Oh, right, yeah, that's, so that would be, yeah, I, I don't know, like, so I would ask, I mean, like, this. So, you know, Robert, you said that if, uh, without that language, you would be concerned it would be defeated, um, for concern of, uh. Yeah, having mobile homes and whatnot.
Well, I'm just anticipating a town, town meeting where, so he can just have a motive, uh, you just have, have an RV as a tiny home, uh. Or a nicely painted shipping container.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I think, um, you know, we should try and get some sense of where the community is on this. Um, you know, if, if the, cause I think there's, there's a little bit of a divide. Obviously, there's, there's plenty in the community that have concerns about mobile homes and trailer parks and everything like that. And I think there are some in the community who are kind of like, you know, it's a little bit exclusionary to not allow. Uh, somebody to buy a lot and set up a mobile home to live in. Because, you know, housing is so expensive. And, you know, you can get a mobile home and, yeah, you gotta dig a, you know, a septic system and, uh, put in a well, which is a big cost, but it's still a lot cheaper. Than building a house or bringing in a modular home.
Well, but Nathan, the thing, the thing that Robert said, which is interesting, is it doesn't mention mobile homes, it's just RVs. So, you know, the, the big things that are actually, you know, drivable. Um, so if we stay away from mobile homes, we're actually probably okay.
Okay.
And a tiny home is a lot tinier of a construction cost than building a house.
Of course, yes. No, I mean, we have a lot to consider. Obviously, we're, we're now at 9:20, so we need to, um. You know, wrap it up, uh, that, you know, so, you know, updates thing, uh. I am still trying to, you know, work on some other things and all, uh, you know, regarding like a, you know, community outreach and hopefully getting together with the public in some way. Um, or, uh. You know, Amherst, uh, did a survey for community housing. I'm trying to get my hands on a copy of that and maybe that can be like kind of the basis to send something out. So, uh, more to come on that. And also I do, you know, want to mention that there's been a few, a few times where, you know, members have addressed the board with opinions on, on various matters. Um, you know, we're talking about them now, but I do wanna caution everyone on the board to, you know, if you're. Uh, you know, looking at a draft for a bylaw amendment or, you know, anything else, uh, you know, if you're trying to. Uh, provide an opinion on it, that's in an email, make sure you're just emailing the person that is working on that and not the entire board, okay? Um, you know, we don't want to, uh. You know, have open meeting law, uh, issues get in the way of any of the work we're trying to do, okay? So, um. All right, that's all I have, uh, does anyone else, um, is there anything that we need to?
Oh, yes, I have one important thing, if you don't mind, Nathan.
I know.
So, if you recall, an hour ago, Nathan was really being pretty, um, detailed about the special permit. Process, and that was because I lent him the big fat rulebook that Donna gave me. She lent, she gave me her hand-me-down, and he wanted to look at it, so, but these things cost four hundred bucks. At least, maybe five hundred at this point, so I was suggesting that the committee actually should have an official copy. Like, you know, it's nice that I have my hand-me-down one, but Nathan should have one or whoever the chair is or whatever, so. I was gonna make a motion, if you guys are okay with it, to allow Nathan, if he can find the money in our budget, to buy one. On behalf of the committee that would live with the committee, um, cause we should, we don't wanna do these things wrong. We need to know what the rulebook is, so are you guys okay with I make a motion to that regard? Okay, I will move to, um, ask the chair of the planning board or enable the chair of the planning board. To secure, what's the name of this thing, Nathan?
Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law.
Purchase one of those for use by the, the planning board, um, you know, contingent upon available funds.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Memorize it.
And can, can you get a, a electronic version or is it just hard copy?
No, it's a scam, it's all for like, you know, land use lawyers and stuff.
How, 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 how long are they, or how often are they updated?
Um.
Every year they come out, you know, supplemental, they come out with supplement, supplemental materials, I think every year.
Yeah, yeah, like. No, like the one I gave Nathan, it's got like four really teeny supplements, so it's all about when you buy it. It's a racket, I mean, it's a great resource, but it costs a lot of money.
Maybe find one on eBay. Well, you know, so, so the thing is, is it re- reviews the, you know, what the statute is and then it, uh. Kind of goes through various examples from case law to illustrate it a little bit, so I mean, it really is very informative and, you know, um. Yeah.
If anybody's having trouble sleeping, they can borrow the book and.
I don't know, I was up late last night reading it.
Yeah, but did you sleep well afterwards?
I, I guess, yeah. No, I mean, you know, the kids still woke me up early in the morning, so, you know, that's, uh, I'll sleep well after tonight, I'll tell you that.
Well, you might consider then using it as bedtime story for the kids.
Okay, um, yeah.
Do the roll, Nathan.
All right, uh, Pike Craft.
Hi.
Ressler.
Hi.
Raymond.
Hi.
Bonner.
Hi.
Take care.
Bye.
And I'm an eye, thank you, Michael, and now, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so Robert, Robert moved, Michael second, um, no discussion? All right, I'll call the roll, I was just gonna say, thanks everyone for hanging in there, it's a long meeting, you know, we got a lot of work to do and I appreciate the conversation. And, uh, the work, uh, that's been put in here, um, especially, uh, Michael preparing those drafts. And, uh, Robert for, you know, having brought this and gotten us going on this, uh, with, uh, isn't growing in tiny homes and. Um, so, thank you. Uh, Ressler.
Hi.
Pike Craft.
Hi.
Raymond.
Hi.
Bonner.
Hi.
Take care.
Bye.
You and I, the meeting is adjourned, thanks again, have a good night, everyone.
Michael, Michael.
Yeah.
What time are we doing Friday?
Oh, I think we have to be there at nine, right? I think we have to be there at nine, so we should probably leave, like, if we leave from Cushman, like, eight the latest, maybe a little before.
You say Cushman, you mean the store?
Yeah, the parking lot in front of the store.
Okay.
And, and it is Bacon Wilson, right?
Yeah, so, maybe you wanna do seven forty-five, so we're not late.
It's, it's gonna be a push for me to do eight, so let's stick with eight, but I'll be on time.
Okay, that's, well, we'll get you a cup of coffee, and so I think, I, and Keith, I haven't, Rita might have. You have to go separately, right, cause you're gonna bail, okay?
Correct.
So right now, it's me and Tom and Steve and Rita might join us, and the rest of you will just miss the good times.
Best of luck.
All right.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye.
Night.
Good night.